Mr. Princk, this meeting the Rowley Meadows City Council Committee of the Whole, actually, is hereby called to order. There are four items on the agenda this evening, and there isn't any need to juggle into the items as sometimes we do, so we can proceed right away with item number one. Mr. Crumstock, do you have a staff introduction for this item?
The staff introduction is going to be done by Finance Director Melissa Gallagher and Justin just beat me in behind, but they will do the intro before Baker Tilly comes up.
All right, fair enough. Mr. Chiappetta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just going to jump right into it here. I'm going to run you by the selection process timeline, just to give you some background on the steps we took. On January 19th, we received direction from the City Council to proceed with obtaining proposals for the project management consultant. February 11th, we released a request for proposal for the professional services. The RFP was sent directly to 10 consulting firms and also posting on the city website. March 11th, we received seven RP responses, which is pretty good. Proposals were reviewed and evaluated, and we selected three finalists who were chosen to undergo interviews. March 31st, interviews were conducted. We did have a few follow-up questions that were sent out after the interviews, and we also conducted reference checks after the interviews. And April 6th, we selected Baker Tilly as the finalist. Why did staff feel that Baker Tilly was the best of the bunch? Baker Tilly has extensive government ERP implementation experience. They have knowledge and experience in developing process improvements, a lot of expertise in governmental accounting, auditing, and standards. They have an excellent skill set in human resources in the Affordable Care Act. They also have extensive contract management experience. The team credentials and experience they have are from multiple fields. It's a Chicago-based team, so they're local. We feel they right-sized the project. We had hours for the project come in all over the board, from very high to very low, and we feel that their proposal was one of the best in terms of right-sizing it. And they were one of the lowest per-hour costs. They were the lowest, actually, of the finalists we selected. Cost evaluation. At the bottom of the screen, you'll see the different phases of the project, and the cost for Phase 1 through 3 is at the top. The cost for Phase 4 is dependent on a lot of different aspects. The actual software ERP vendor that will eventually be selected will take the lead for Phase 4. So staff expects minimal involvement from Baker Tilly during Phase 4, and Baker Tilly will be used primarily for mediation and timeline enforcement of the ERP vendor. Also, any hours not used from Phases 1 through 3 can be used for this phase as well, so we won't just lose those hours. So overall, it's usually hard to come up with costs for this phase, but we don't expect a lot of hours to be used, if any. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Baker Tilly for their introductions and presentation.
And as people come up to the microphone, I'm just going to point out, I just learned a new phrase, "timeline enforcement." I'm going to start telling my students I don't have due dates. I just enforce the timeline, so love that. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate being here. We're very excited about this opportunity, and we love doing these types of projects. So we'll go ahead and quickly introduce ourselves. We are Baker Tilly, and I'm Caitlin Hummerkhaus. I would be the project manager for your project, and I manage all of our state and local government consulting projects. So anything from ERP projects to, if it's a staffing review, to more operational-focused performance audits, I manage all of those for our group. And our group works exclusively with local governments, so mainly counties, municipalities, some K-12 school districts, but we really are government-focused. We all have our Masters of Public Administration, and so this has, you know, local government is really our passion and what we do every day, and we have a really deep understanding of what goes into local government operations. I'll let Kyle introduce himself real quick.
Good evening. Thanks again for having us. My name is Kyle O'Rourke. I've worked in public accounting for several years exclusively for governments. I've split my time about 50/50 between organizational or internal audit business process-focused work, as well as on ERP projects like this. As Caitlin will mention later, that business process piece component to this sort of project is critically important, so I've worked in all finance functions, accounting, HR, payroll, all the things that are going to come together in the kind of overall ERP project. Again, very passionate about serving local governments from a community that's relatively local, Waukegan, Illinois, and look forward to serving you all over the next about a year.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Lomé, and I'll be the business analyst for you. And I have about seven years' experience in the private, public, and nonprofit sector, looking at process engineering, and also have a finance background. And really, will be on this team, specializing for HR workforce development as well.
And then we have another team member who's not here tonight, and that's Russ Hissam. He's the partner for our team. So Russ has been at Baker Tilly for 30 years, so he's a little bit of an anomaly, but he's great. So he also focuses on local government as well as the utility sector, so he will be an integral part of the project, and mainly Russ's role on the project is for quality assurance. Quickly about Baker Tilly, we have more than 2,500 staff, and why we like to say that is that means we have a deep bench, so if we run into something particularly complicated in your project, we can pull from our audit staff. We have a fraud and forensics team. We have an employee benefit healthcare team. We have a manufacturing and distribution team, so we really have a lot of people with very focused expertise that we can pull into the project if we need to. We have a deep Illinois presence, so deep that I had to make two slides for it. So you know, you might see some of your neighboring communities up there, and these are both consulting and audit clients. We have some library clients up there. The next slide should be our K-12 clients and some other entities. So you know, we've worked all across Illinois, and we have also worked all across Wisconsin as well. Okay, so what makes us different? So again, we focus on local government, so we understand what's different about local government operations and how to optimize them. Our projects really position you for success, so we have done quite a few ERP selections and business process reviews, as well as things like resource optimization, helping reduce costs. So really, we look at this, and we have a slide on this later, but really as a holistic project, where we're not just looking at the technology, but we're looking at your operations and making sure that you're aligned with best practices. Again, that passion that we have for government, it's really our focus every day that we go to work. And then our project team is specialists in this, so we've all worked on these type of projects. We understand, you know, some of the risks with the projects. We understand how to mitigate them, and so, again, really excited about this opportunity. So getting in a little bit to ERP, and ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning, and it's a system that's basically a software application that's going to be citywide. So typically, it'll cover, you know, core ERP is finance, procurement, HR, and payroll, but then you have all this additional functionality now, including work orders, so all your public work stuff, inventory, treasury management, utility billing. Code enforcement is typically able to be added on to that, and so really what you end up having is a big umbrella system for the whole city. So all your data is in one place. It's flowing really well, and you gain a lot of efficiencies from that. And again, the extended functionality, CRM, that's Customer Relationship Management, so a lot of them have a way for citizens to come online, you know, submit a request, hey, there's a pothole on this road, that automatically turns into a work order for your public works department. So it really gives you a lot more interaction with your citizens. So ERP really transitions an organization from one that's disconnected. You have data in multiple Excel spreadsheets, multiple versions of the truth, as we like to say, and that transitions you to a point where you have one single point of data entry. You have increased information management capacity, and you just have reduced systems, reduced processing times, and are overall more efficiency. So this is a nice little graphic. This is from an actual client of ours. This is hard to look at. It's very messy, but this was their environment just for finance functions. And so these were all of the different systems that they were using before they moved to a comprehensive ERP system. This next slide shows what it looked like after they moved to ERP. So you're not going to completely eliminate some of those Excel spreadsheets that you have, but you're going to vastly reduce it, and that just means that people are able to get data out of the system more quickly. Again, that one version of the truth, it's auditors love ERP systems because it's much easier for them to get the information that they need, and really just helps you manage all of the data that you would have. Again, this is again before ERP selection, so you're really focusing on transaction processing, so pushing paper from point A to point B, making sure that you have everything documented, and you're really not focused on analytics, decision-making, making business decisions with data. After ERP, you really reduce that processing time and that paper pushing, so now you have the data at your fingertips, and you're able to do a lot more analytics with that. So really moving you to be a strategic organization. Okay, so our methodology, again, I said we have this holistic approach. So for us, it's not just about helping you select a system. We really look at this as an opportunity for you to improve your operations. So we start off with a strategic vision, and we have an executive visioning session where we meet with you and say, for the next 10 years, what are some of your strategic goals? Because this will be a system that you'll have for 10 years, so we want to make sure that whatever system you select is going to support those goals. Change management happens throughout the project, and we'll touch on that in a little bit more detail, but really making sure that you're incorporating everybody that's going to be using the system, helping them understand why it's going to help them, and really getting them on board. Process improvement, again, we'll go into more detail on this, but when we go through this process, we're actually talking through all of the processes with the people that are doing them every day, and based on our experience, we're able to make recommendations about how that process can be improved to either align with an industry best practice or be more efficient. And then again, we'll be looking at internal controls. So Kyle's actually a certified internal auditor, so he's great with those kind of things. He can always point out where there's control deficiencies that you might not realize. He's worked with all size communities, so he understands if you're a smaller community, sometimes you have to do some creative things to make sure that you have those segregation of duties that you're supposed to have. So process improvement and internal controls, these are just some examples of things that we've seen on other projects that we've worked on. So looking at best practice procurement processes, the first one, that three-way matching internal controls right there, but then looking at more strategic stuff, like using commodity codes, maintaining your vendor file the right way, so that you really make sure that when you're going through your procurement, you're really getting the most money out of the dollars that you have here, or the most value out of the dollars. And then enhanced CIP processes, a lot of times we see, you know, when we go into these, there's an opportunity to improve the coordination between departments working on those projects, developing some frameworks for ranking projects, and then really just doing accurate project budgeting, so that you don't get into a project thinking it might be one thing, and then you have, you know, two months later, you're already over budget by, you know, $300,000 or something. Increased use of data to measure key performance indicators and make business decisions. So once you have an ERP and you have all this data at your fingertips, you're really able to move to that point where you're really managing by data and key performance indicators and really holding people accountable. Okay, and then just a very detailed one is this established receivable hierarchy schedule. So if you have receivables all across the city, in an ERP system, you can actually decide, okay, when somebody pays their receivable, we can decide which one we wanted to hit first. Or if they have multiple receivables outstanding, we can prevent them from, you know, taking out, you know, getting their utility bill until they pay their outstanding parking tickets or something like that. So it really helps you increase your revenue flow. And then improved reporting and tracking of fixed assets. This seems to be an area of struggle everywhere we go. It's really hard for people to kind of get a hold of where all their fixed assets are, and a lot of ERP systems have a really great fixed asset module built in that really helps on the accounting side, as well as kind of on the functional side of knowing where all of your fixed assets are. Okay, and then change management. We start this on day one. So if you feel that your users kind of need an intro to ERP, we can do an ERP 101 session, explain what it is, why it'll benefit them. We get their input throughout, so we try and reach everybody in the organization so that they feel like they've had a voice in the process. We do a lot of internal communications to staff, so whatever that looks like to you, whether it's a newsletter or whether it's, you know, a SharePoint site that they can have access to, we work with you to figure out how your staff like to communicate and what the best way to get information to them is. And then continuous feedback and validation. We're constantly validating what we hear, issuing draft reports, and asking for feedback so that we make sure that we get it right. We have project status reporting throughout, and again, we'll customize that for however you like to receive that information. And then anticipating implementation needs, so whether that's if you might need additional staffing, if there's going to be process changes, trying to figure out what we can work on to improve before the implementation process starts. It's all part of our comprehensive change management approach. And contract negotiation. So we help all of our ERP system selection clients through the contract negotiation part. We definitely have your legal counsel take the lead on that, but for us, we have the benefit of having been through multiple of these and seeing what, you know, what you are able to negotiate, what you should definitely have in your contract, really make sure that it's a fair process for you and that you're being represented well. All righty, so that's it for us. Here's our contact information, but if you have any questions, you know, Justin has all of our emails and phone numbers, so he can certainly reach out to us.
Comments or questions from the council? Mr. Princk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you, folks, for coming tonight. I also have to thank staff, because when this first came in and I started doing some research, you're looking at someone who was in business school, used to use a flow chart. I'm sorry, you probably don't even know what that is, but that's how, you know, and I'm thinking back later on. Just a couple of quick questions, because I did like the fact that you talked about the change management all-inclusive, so that you're able to help whether it's not only the finance department, but if it's the police chief or fire chief or community development, you can tie that all in together, so that was kind of cool. I just have two questions for you quickly, is how long have you worked as a team together as a group?
Our team? So Russ, who's the partner on the project, Russ and I have worked together for close to four years on all the projects. Kyle's been on our team for a year, and Allison's been on our team for eight months.
Okay, and how many projects have you completed as a team?
ERP projects?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've been, we've worked on two ERP projects together, and then outside of that, we've worked on numerous consulting engagements together.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Jet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this primarily Microsoft-based?
Yes. They're all, all the systems that I've ever seen are Microsoft-based compatible with Microsoft products. A lot of times, the imports and exports will be from Word or Excel, or they can output...
Do you work with anything other than Microsoft?
Well, so the system wouldn't be necessarily a Microsoft product. There's multiple vendors in the space, so there's probably five or six vendors that would be able to propose a solution for a community your size, and they're all compatible with Microsoft Office and a Microsoft operating system.
I understand the ERP need. I happen to know somebody that's fairly knowledgeable about this stuff, and before I can say that I'll commit to one way or the other, I'd like to talk to him and possibly, depending on whether or not we can bring him in, go from there. But he's what I would consider an expert in the field. He's been doing this for 30 years. So before I really say that I can, you know, do that, I wouldn't mind having a meeting with him and, you know, maybe the manager and Justin or whatever, just kind of get a clearer picture, you know, before I get into something that I really have no clue about, because I don't. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the council? All right, then, not seeing any, is there any objection to moving forward in the process that's been outlined? Then seeing no objection, let's move on ahead, and we look forward to seeing how this project unfolds.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to come out and make the presentation.
Thank you.
You can switch that to the Hawkscam.
How did you know anybody at the table had interest? I'm not sure. It might be a bit of a mystery. So then, Mr. Chiappetta, Mr. Crumstock, would that be satisfactory for item one?
Yes, it is.
All right, then we'll move to item two, the streetlight updates. I believe that's going to be Mr. Vogt.
And Mr. Wenzel.
And Mr. Wenzel as well. All right. Mr. Vogt, the floor is yours.
Good evening. When we last talked streetlights was back in June of 2015 with the Committee of the Whole report, and it's unfortunately taken quite a while in working with ComEd to get an understanding of a sample area that we wanted to work on, based on the discussions we had with the AdHoc Committee a year, roughly a year ago. Our sample involved 21 streetlight upgrades in an area west of Quentin Road and along Quentin Road. Initially, we had to send in a deposit for engineering. We came back, or ComEd came back a couple weeks ago with a proposal for $4,882. Additional costs to do these upgrades are an average of about $350 per light. The goal of what we've been trying to do with this pilot area, as I'll call it, is to improve lighting output, develop standards for street uses, as we discussed at the AdHoc Committee, major streets, collector's streets, and then residential side streets. The type of lighting, the committee looked at LED lighting, some of the samples that some of our neighboring communities have out there as kind of a pilot program, high-pressure sodium, the kind of orangish glow that is out there in many areas, including Waverly Park, which the city relamped several years ago, and the old standard mercury vapor. We discussed all of this with ComEd, and I should say, it did take quite a while to get to the point we're at now, but felt that now that we have the information from them on the cost of that, we wanted to come back to council with, to get some direction on where to go next. Is the City Council ready to move forward with this pilot area of 21 lights and do the upgrades? The proposal is for the high-pressure sodium that was discussed with the AdHoc Committee. Should the city budget for targeted areas? How would we do upgrades in future years? How much, how quickly would we want to move, or how slowly would we want to move? Is it a budget expenditure consideration, safety consideration? How much funding should be provided, basically, which is something that we can deal with either, you know, in committee meetings to get direction, or through the budgetary process, or both? How should our priorities be determined with regards to, should we focus on improving lighting to major streets in the city first? Should we do it based on greatest need, the areas that don't have much lighting now or have older fixtures compared to other areas? Should we just do it by simple geographics and split the community up into areas that make sense from the standpoint of relamping? Number of things to consider. Some of these things certainly could go back to an AdHoc Committee, as we had, as we worked last year on looking at some of the lighting and determining what our goals were for that. So that's our basic report for now in terms of what we're presenting. I know Alderman Cannon contacted me the other day with some corrections in terms of actually finding that two of these 21 locations already have high-pressure sodium lamps. Unfortunately, working with ComEd, sometimes their records aren't real timely, and if we rely just on their records, in some locations, ComEd, when they have to replace ballasts or do maintenance, do do the changeover to a high-pressure sodium for mercury vapor without even really telling us that they're going to do that. They just do it, and then it's up to us to kind of find out later, but their billing is much slower than normal, too, so we really don't complain about that, because whenever they catch up and bill us for the improvement, we'll pay it at that time, but not until such time as they catch up with that. So that's where we are right now. Don Wenzel is here, who has worked with ComEd and had more communication directly with them than I have, if there's any technical questions with regards to that. So I open that up for any questions or comments.
So then, before proceeding to the questions sort of in order, are there general comments or questions so far from the council? Mr. Baner, then Mr. De Estes.
Thank you. One question I would have, I doubt it's in ComEd's best interest to lead us down a path of springing for our own lights or going solar, I don't know if there is such a thing, or like, you know, energy-efficient options, much more energy-efficient options. Did we have that conversation with them? It'd be less money that they're making, so I don't know if they, they're, they would be interested or volunteer that information, but is, are the ones, the HBS lights, the most efficient?
They're more energy-efficient than the mercury vapor, but not as efficient as the LED lights. So to answer your question back from a ComEd perspective, I don't know that ComEd really has a position one way or the other, other than whatever improvements we would make would be at the city's cost to do those changeouts. Certainly, there'll be some savings changing out from mercury vapor to high-pressure sodium. There'd be more savings potential to go with the LED. Some of the comments that we've had on LED and some of the comments, you know, that I can make based on what we've looked at is that they're very bright, and that was some of the discussion we had back at the AdHoc Committee last year was, well, you know, maybe LED lights would be appropriate in some locations, such as major streets, highways, and the like, but maybe not as desirable in residential areas. So all things that yet can be considered. We've just based our work to date based on the discussions we've had at the AdHoc Committee.
LEDs are still an option also from ComEd, and they're a all or nothing, though. We can't just take this area and put LEDs in, and then the rest of it have a mixture of things. The program that they offer is full conversion to LED. But what's funny is that we talked to the Village of Palatine today, who is also looking at test areas, but ComEd can't tell us what our monthly rental will eventually be on an LED fixture. They have not calculated that out, but they're offering the program. So, and the advantage, you know, to LED, and very recently, I think Monday, the City of Chicago announced that they were changing out like 200,000 lights. It gives you a brighter light, and for when, you know, our presumption is, is that because of them having all the cameras in Chicago, that being able to see faces better with a white light rather than an orange light. So, and then, as Fred and I talked, you know, if we decide to go with LED, then what do we do with all the city-owned streetlights? It's not a cheap, you know, venture to make that change.
Cost, you know, the cost return from an energy standpoint would certainly be realized, but considerably down the road, no pun intended, but we'd have to do some considerable calculations on that as to what the return is, how quickly.
I know, as far as the brightness is concerned, I know when they put those lights in Algonquin, they put that back baffle on, so they downcast. So if it's a neighborhood, if it's a residential issue where you want some light but nothing glaring, I would think that would be an option.
Yes, it would. There's a number of things from an engineering standpoint one can do to... There's a number of things from an engineering standpoint one can do to direct the light and retard the light, you know, in other directions.
Thank you. Mr. De Estes.
Thank you. I was on the committee, the ad hoc committee, and I'm a little confused. The first sentence says staff was directed to work with ComEd. After our initial meeting, we never had another meeting. So who directed staff to use this specific area and not some other area of the city?
Was this the discussion based at the June Committee of the Whole Report, from June 2015?
Okay, I don't recall that one. Maybe I wasn't at that meeting.
But all we've done at this point is get the cost information on it. We have not made any commitment to do anything at this point.
Well, I think the committee should get back together again because you raised a lot of questions. We looked at a lot of different lights that evening, but we never made any determination of should we go with LEDs. Several people wanted to go with the orange lights, but it seems to me that we've got an, I'm not opposed to anything at this point in time, but I'm certainly, don't feel like the committee has had an opportunity to talk about this and make this recommendation. So as far as I'm concerned, I haven't made this recommendation on behalf, from my seat on the committee.
And that certainly would be an option if the council so chooses to refer this or other matters back to the committee for further discussion and consideration.
I mean, and then, we've already paid $2,500 to ComEd. We have lights burned out throughout the city. How come they haven't fixed those lights yet? If you drive down East Frontage Road between Kirchhoff and Algonquin or West Frontage, there's lights burned out and there's lights of different colors. Why is that not one of the target areas to get that straightened out? And I thought we had during our conversation said that if a light was burned out, they would replace it with a more modern and updated light.
Only.
And then we could pick out which fixture we wanted.
The only time that the light will be replaced is if the ballast is bad, you know, if the ballast burns out. If it's a bulb, they'll change the bulb. If it's a ballast, then we have requested that they replace them with high-pressure sodium and with a comparable size. And, or comparable wattage.
And were we not going to talk about making recommendations to this committee, to this board, about what size lights should be on what roadways? Didn't we talk about that at our meeting?
We did.
And did we ever come back and have that discussion of what we should do?
We, actually, we didn't bring it back. We took what the engineer's recommendation was.
Okay, I feel like we started a process, and from my aspect, I was let, I don't know anything more until we had this conversation, this conversation that's taking place tonight. So I'm a little bit upset with this whole thing because it doesn't seem like we took it from step one to step four. I mean, it seems like we went from one to four, and we skipped two and three.
Okay. Point well taken, and we can.
Gentlemen, can I ask, when was the meeting of the ad hoc committee? Can you tell me?
It was, I believe, January of 2015, and then we did the field investigations in, I believe, April of 2015, reported back to the committee of the whole in June with some guidelines and the like, which is what we've been working with ComEd since that time.
Then, unfortunately, I would like to weigh in and say that I would be willing to entertain Mr. De Estes's suggestion. One of the wonderful things we can do with this technology is go right back to the meeting that Mr. Vogt mentioned, which is why I asked when the one meeting was. And the direct quote from the minutes is, "Nothing required until the council wishes to give us direction. We'll report back to the committee likely within the next one or two months, and then go from there." And if that was in June, and the committee hasn't met since then, I believe the point is well taken and would be willing to entertain. There's no need for a formal motion to refer to committee, but that's what we would do if it was a council meeting. I would extend the courtesy of asking Mr. Cannon, the other alderman who was on that committee, does that sound like a reasonable course of action to you?
I couldn't say it better myself.
Well, then, without going further into the discussion, I believe the point is well taken, and I believe perhaps that's what the council should quickly discuss right now. Are there any further thoughts expressed about simply saying this should go back to that ad hoc streetlight committee before it gets further discussion? Mr. Judd.
I don't have a problem with that. I just have one question. I don't know if I can answer it now or...
You could.
It doesn't talk about what you just talked about, it has to do with the lights in general.
Well, then, might I ask, does it really need to be asked tonight, right here, right now?
Well, it would help me in the future.
Great. There's going to be a whole lot of time while this goes to committee. You've got all the time in the world to pick up the phone and ask somebody. It doesn't really need to be part of the debate, which we're trying to save time on. Is that all right? I'm not really sure a shrug indicates whether it's all right or not.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what it is, that's what it is. I mean, I was just going to ask for something to be considered in the committee as it moves forward, and that's all.
Well, you know two guys who are on the committee, and it can be taken care of that way as well. Then, are there any further comments about the suggestion to move it back to that ad hoc committee? Mr. Prina.
Just very, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, since there seems to be a time that has elapsed, is there, how quickly could the committee get back together again and get back to us? That would be, I only, it's entirely up to them, but it seems like there's been this long lull, and now there's this anticipation. So just a thought out there, however the committee wants to do it, but, you know, whatever they want to do next month.
Well, it didn't sound from Mr. Vogt's comments like there's a particular urgency. Am I incorrect on that?
Only in that it had been such a long time to get to this point from ComEd that we felt directly to come to the committee of the whole was appropriate as far as scheduling of meeting, meetings with the ad hoc committee. We can certainly reach out and see when we can do that, and from that point, we would at appropriate time, report back to this committee.
Fair enough. Further comments on this particular topic of referring it back to that ad hoc committee on streetlights? Then may I ask for a show of hands, those in favor of doing so, please raise your hand? That is a unanimous council. So therefore, that's what we'll do. We'll go back and take that step, so that steps two and three get taken before we go to four, to use the analogy that was made earlier.
Thank you.
Then that will stop discussion on item number two, or letter B, I guess. I'm not really sure which it is. And then we'll go to number three, letter C, whichever it happens to be, and that's the gateway signs, correct? Or the entry signs? I'm mixing.
Entry markers, community event signs is next on the agenda.
There we go.
That's your pleasure.
Yep. Then who takes that one? Mr. Vogt still? All right, Mr. Vogt, the floor is still yours, then, just for the next item.
For this one, I'll just do an introduction and turn it over to Don, who's been doing most of the investigation. But the reason these are on the agenda together is because of the fact that the community events sign, which is planned for replacement in the FY 2016 budget, staff really feels that the discussion with the sign, the appearance of the sign, the different options that we've investigated, should be considered, at least to tie in for continuity and appearance sake with the entry markers for whatever we may move forward with. Don has made contact with, I believe, three different vendors with regards to the entry markers. The fourth that Alderman Cannon indicated from the Elk Grove Village perspective, we're kind of holding back on, but certainly there's plenty of vendors out there. The thing that we've seen consistency-wide is that generally, we will not get designs provided to us unless we at least agree to pay for them, in which case, if we did choose a certain vendor to do the sign fabrication, that design money would be credited back towards the sign. So with that in mind, just a little bit of investigation in terms of looking at illuminating signs, I can let Don talk about that, in terms of electrical service or solar power, those considerations, and then getting into the community event sign in terms of the appearances. So with that, Don, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Wenzel.
I'll get it.
You got it.
In your packet this evening, I've included some exhibits on the possible replacement for the community event sign. And as Fred indicated, you know, to get continuity, kind of what we're looking at as far as with the lettering and whether or not we use the RM, don't use the RM. If we use a city seal, don't use a city seal. So, you know, so that we can, again, get the continuity as to what exactly are we looking for with the community event sign, and how do we want to take that to the entry marker level? None of our entry markers have electrical power to them. We do have, we've investigated and gotten pricing on solar power to the signs, and it, you know, it's a one-time payment for the solar power compared to putting in regular electrical service from ComEd. And so that is an option. The one company that I talked to, that they would take and make an illuminated sign, LED illuminated sign that would be retrofitted to our existing monument signs that we have, and it would go over the face of it. And it's kind of similar to what's depicted up on the board on the left up there on the bottom, but certainly there are other options as far as the design taken into, you know, using some of the designs from the community event sign. So our goal this evening, again, is to find, or get the direction of city council as to what do we want to incorporate into the signs as you're looking at the exhibits, one, two, three, and four. Staff, you know, we're kind of of the opinion that exhibit four gives a whole new appearance. And the sign manufacturer suggested lowering it because of the tree canopy, lowering the sign to what you see in a lot of other municipalities where the electronic message center is closer to the ground. And so that's kind of what's depicted in that exhibit number four. So with that, we're, again, we're looking for direction. What do we, you know, what are we looking to incorporate? Are we looking to, you know, kind of rebrand the city? You know, which direction do you want us to take with this?
Comments or questions from the council? Mr. Prina.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel, for all your help on this matter. One of the things, and I thank Fred because I had a discussion with him, basically, was that electronic page 24, exhibit four, that you're talking about. I know that Alderman Cannon has brought up, in the past, that he'd like to see, I don't know if you call it, a different look for the city when we come into it. And he's also mentioned that on the western side of the city, they don't seem to know we're rolling metals at times. So this is my thought. I just thought we'd share it out here, and if this is the appropriate place. The sign that is proposed for, or is being shown tonight for the front of City Hall, if we looked at putting something like that also at Gateway Park, the exit on 53 when we come off of Kirchhoff, and only staff knows where we could put one west of 53 so that they could be coordinated. Obviously, you don't want it as large as the one that's going to be in City Hall, but it would give us a new look. And plus, the fact is, a lot of the events that we have in the city, you could just have Justin, you could just program a Justin, and it would be there. And if we're having something special happen, it could be happening throughout the city, and I think it would give us a whole new look. My thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments from the council? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw this day of the day, I was a little bit surprised because I thought, last year when we had a discussion about this, kind of like the last item, I thought I'd offered my services. I actually went out and actually interviewed a company that's actually in this industry and is making signs for a number of our neighbors. They weren't contacted yet. It's kind of disappointing to me because I think they've tried to do some things that are innovative. I guess the fear I have with this presentation, at least the entry markers, is we seem to be going back to the same thing that we're doing right now. And I think most of us at this table could agree that we've had our fair set of issues with the existing signage because of the damage that get incurred because of the way we plow. Not that we're doing anything wrong plowing, but because of the way we clear streets, our markers take a beating. And for us to put something in front of them or put some kind of extruded letters in the front of them, I think would just magnify the issue of damage quicker. So I don't really think that's a solution. I was hoping, when this came back, that maybe we would look at some opportunities to do something different, either getting them up in the air a little bit off the ground, understanding that we only have 32 square feet to work with. I know that limits us as to what we can do. So like putting the city sign in multiple locations, even though it's an admirable thing, I think most of the locations where we have markers now, and I can be corrected if Fred knows differently, I think we're still limited to that 32 square feet of frontage. Is that correct?
As far as we know, we haven't checked in recent years to see if there's any increase in that, but everything that we have throughout the city in terms of the entry markers is dictated by the fact that they're in state or county right-of-way. They both had limited, back in the 90s when we built these, to 32 square feet. They had to be of breakaway design. So, you know, you raise a good point with regards to their proximity in some of our narrower, smaller right-of-ways, the closeness of them to the street and to the elements and the snow and ice plowing damage. There's also limitations, I would expect, in terms of where those signs are located with regards to illuminating them. And depending on what we spend, in some cases, maybe we should consider looking at some other locations or getting them further back from the highway to try to protect them. Remember, these signs are 16, 17 years old at this point. A couple of them have been refurbished, but I think anything's fair game right now in terms of what direction we take.
Well, I think that, you know, I think Mr. Prina brings up a couple of good points. I think it would be nice to have something on the west end of town, west of 53, because the events last year, a lot of people out there, even with our great efforts with our newsletters and things of that nature, just people just aren't aware of stuff. You know, they barely even know about farmers and food trucks, as much as we've done a great job of trying to get that message out. And I know there's no one easy solution, but, I don't know, even a sign in front of the fire station might be helpful. And that's in far enough, we could make it as big as we wanted, because it would be on our property then. But again, I guess, and my disappointment is that I fact that we're just going back to the same way we're doing things. I'd like to see different concepts, and I guess I would like to have some vendors brought in. I know this fellow that I've talked to is more than willing to come and sit with anybody in the city and talk about ideas, actually sketch some stuff out. He's not going to give you, obviously, a final, final look, but he's actually doing it. He just signed a new contract today with Burr Ridge. He's done over 20 signs in Elk Grove Village. He designed them and manufactured them, and I think he has some interesting ideas. They've discovered, they've developed a new way of actually anchoring them in the ground without cement, but still have a breakaway platform on them. So I think that there's things out there that I would like to see us investigate. I know a number of the cities around us, I'll point out at least two, Arlington Heights and Prospect Heights, both have entry markers that are up in the air on metal signs that I find relatively attractive. They're pretty simple signs, they're not elaborate or anything, but they get the message across that, hey, you're in Prospect Heights now, welcome. And that's what I would like to see. The existing signs we have that are not full-size markers, in my opinion, just having visited Florida, I think our signs would look wonderful down in Florida, the color scheme and stuff. But I think, I think we really need to look at coming up with a different program. I suggested in the past, we changed that, and I, and most people weren't supportive of that, but that's, I'm just offering an opinion today. And to answer a couple of your specific questions, the RM on the sign in the triangle, to me, is meaningless. We're announcing that we're the city of rolling meadows already. The RM doesn't really add anything to the message. A sign's supposed to just tell you what it is all about. You don't need to have a logo and a message at the same time. So I think that that's not necessary in the new design. And I do agree with you, though, that I think it's great that you're trying to coordinate both our main sign outside here and the entry markers to do something, and, you know, slowly over the next couple of years, change them all out. Thank you.
I would like to make my comments at this point because...
I would like to make my comments at this point because in a couple different avenues, I expect that what I have to say could create a little bit of tension. That's not, that's not what I wish, so I'll try to be as careful as I can. I am very disappointed as well to hear from Mr. Cannon. Mr. Cannon, before I go off a little bit, would you clarify for me? You're saying that you were not contacted when it came to the sign item that's in tonight's agenda?
When Jenny sent me the memo, that's the first time I knew about it.
Because, kind of in the same vein of what we were just talking about on the previous item, forgive me for trying to quickly find and speed read here during the meeting, but the actual minutes of the council meeting when we discussed the signs, specifically say from Mr. Cannon, I guess I would like the opportunity to work with Fred and his staff to interview some other people and to come up with the best guy, girl, or company and come back to you and say, here are some designs we agreed to. It seems like that was not followed. We always say that when aldermen signal a certain form of direction, even as individuals, people should take that into account. Mr. Baner is in the minutes saying he's not really interested in looking at brick. Even brick, I think, degrades over a shorter time than things like thick acrylic and things that we've seen in the past couple of years. So I'd be a big fan of redesigns in new materials. And I'm not seeing that incorporated here at all. In the council action summary, there's a line that says, we put together some designs, and I do appreciate that, but it specifically says, well, we're not going to get any designs from a professional unless we spend some money. In the minutes from that meeting, Mr. Cannon says, I'm proposing that we spend maybe up to $10,000 maximum to hire either a company or an individual to establish a new look for us. I'm trying to be as polite as I can. It doesn't seem like any of that was followed. And we just went through that on the previous item. Am I incorrect? Mr. Vote?
If I may, Mayor. We did, Mr. Wenzel and myself, meet with Alderman Cannon, I believe it was last fall at Public Works Building, went over some of the information we had at that point in time. That was probably after the last committee, the whole discussion on this. I would like to get specific direction to make some financial expenditures for one or two vendors to do that. I would ask for the committee's direction if that's the case to do so, and then we can, I believe, get to the point where you think we should be.
I understand, but I think that, and again, I'm just sitting here while the other things are being talked at, just quickly pulling up minutes and seeing what they say. It looks like a quick sit-down with Mr. Cannon is not what was suggested and not what the council gave direction for. I kind of almost wonder, I know there's not a sign committee and I'm not suggesting that we create one, but I kind of almost wonder if we should do something similar and say, as politely as possible, there are good ideas here that I hope will make it into choices that we have. But the process that was talked about, which has been in print since September 8th, doesn't look like it was followed. And not to make form go over function, but if nothing else, out of respect for, this was Alderman Cannon's item, I think we saw what happened with the Bs when it's somebody's item and they don't even get input on it. I hope I'm not going overboard, but that's my suggestion. Does anybody have any thoughts? Mr. Wenzel?
If I can just add something, Mr. Mayor, is that the four exhibits that are before you this evening on the community sign, you know, we really have done nothing on the entry markers, other than get a cost to put an illuminated face on them. There has been no design work done on the entry markers at this point. We reached out to a couple of the vendors that have been servicing our community signs since White Way went bankrupt, and they are out of business. And it's a proprietary sign and equipment and said, you know, look, we've got money in the budget this year, what can we do? These were just a couple off-the-cuff designs that they came up with, but it kind of gave, you know, what we're kind of asking for is the direction to go, you know, even with the community sign, is do we, you know, what do we want to include on it? And, you know, do we move forward with the community sign without having designed the entry markers? Do we design, you know, the entry markers and then the community sign? Because we're living minute by minute with the sign that we've got out there.
Understood. And I certainly don't mean to prolong the process, but then that means people need to take good care that the processes are followed, in my opinion. Mr. DeEstes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a council, we're all going to have different opinions. Mr. Baner stated his opinion how he liked the plastic more than the brick, and I'm just paraphrasing. I like the brick more than the plastic. I'd like to see several different...
I believe we all would.
Several different. I mean, the ones I'm looking at now, I kind of like number three. I don't like the low ones to the ground, okay? I never have. From, you can't see them until you're right on top of them if you're driving. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fan favorite of number four, unless it was as tall as maybe number three. But I like number three.
But if I might, in the same venue as Mr. Judd, the question really right now on the floor is, are there thoughts about saying...
That's where I was going.
Let's go, okay, okay, as long as you're headed there.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. So, what I'd like to do is, this is Mr. Cannon's deal, and if he needs another person to form a committee, I'll join, I'll join Mike's committee and help him out on this one.
We can just rename the streetlight committee the Streetlight and Entryway Marker Committee and...
But I'm just saying, I'm okay to do that, but I think, yes, we need to come up with some, some fresh ideas and we need to come up with some traditional ideas and present it to seven people who will then vote on, do we go with more traditional or do more, more new, not so, more modern? Do we go with more traditional materials or more modern materials? But in either case, I think, you know, it started off with Mike and it was his idea to start to do something with this, and I think we need to kind of be true to that. So, I'd say, we need to, we need to find steps two and three again.
I concur. Other thoughts? Mr. Prina?
Just, and help me, just clarification. Should we give, are we trying to give direction tonight to say that $10,000 or whatever that Mr. Alderman Cannon brought up is, it's out there? If this helps get the process going, do it? Is that, is that the...
Well, I believe we did back in September, and it was an amount up to, it's not necessarily saying we're plunking down 10 grand, but the direct intention from the minutes looks like if it's going to cost a little bit, it can cost a little bit, just don't go crazy.
I was just clarifying. I heard you say it, but I just want to make sure that it's out there because I will support doing that, so.
Then might I ask for a show of hands for essentially doing the same thing with item C as we did with item B or 3 with 2 or however you want to designate it and send this back for more work? That is also a unanimous council.
Thank you. That's the direction we're looking for. Appreciate it.
In the same vein as trying to stay diplomatic and not try to cause tension, the only thing I might disagree with at all, because I am strongly in favor of almost everything that was said, there has twice now tonight been references at this table to, I as an alderman, either went and talked to a vendor or want to talk to somebody and bring them in to have meetings with our staff. We as aldermen have no power, no authority to do any of those things. And none of us, including me, the mayor, gets to go out and talk to vendors, gets to say, I want to bring a guy I know in to talk to the staff. Everybody has the authority to control their vote however they wish and say, I won't vote for something until I feel fully informed. But getting vendors and, and going through an entire selection process, then to be vetoed by a single request for, oh, I think I know somebody who knows something about this too and I want to talk to them. There are very good reasons why none of us have that power nor authority. And if you want to know what the reasons are, go look at the city of Chicago where every freaking alderman feels like they can bring in this person, that person, or whatever. We may not do that. I hope I have been sufficiently clear and I hope I haven't, again, ruffled feathers. I'm trying to just make a point and move on. Mr. Cannon?
You didn't ruffle my feathers, but I just would like to point out to you, even though I met a vendor, I didn't invite him in.
Fair enough.
I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree with you. I didn't invite anybody in, and that's part of the reason why they never showed up.
Fair enough. I appreciate that clarification. Can we move to item 4? All right, let's move to item 4. The Gateway Park, people started passing things around the table, so I assume we're ready? Let's change the mojo, please.
Yes, I just have a brief, quick comments before we turn it back over to Fred and Don. Obviously, there's some boards that many residents cannot see at home, but we do have it for the council. And from the last discussion that we had, obviously, when Burke did some concepts, this is a new firm, and again, 3D, that came up with some other ideas. And from some of the past discussions, if there was parking, there's some parking in some of these concepts, but it's still, the staff is looking for some direction on the elements. And again, each of these different revisions, you know, you have some parking, you have some other ideas and some other concepts, but we haven't obtained any cost estimates. That would be the next thing if the council directs us to move to that way. And then also the commitment to provide future funding at this point in time and the capital improvement plan that you have not seen yet, we haven't budgeted anything at this point in time, but these are all items that we're now looking at. This is all concepts, and I do thank Don for making the three boards specifically just showing some of the stuff that we've talked about in the past. And I can tell you as staff-wise that we've heard from a lot of residents since we keep on bringing up Gateway and cleaning it up and walking. And I was actually over there over the weekend and there were some residents walking there and said, it would be nice that we still have the circle. And we keep reminding them that's part of the concept and everything like that. But again, we keep on listening to what you say and this plan does bring in, or most of the plans do bring in, some parking. One is pretty dramatic, that actually affects how we deal with Kirch Off-Road. The others are pretty much not as bad, but again, these are all concepts. And with that, I do turn it over to Fred and Don again.
Thank you.
Mr. Vote?
And just, as my intro comments, what are the chances of a relatively new staff member in Public Works contacting a vendor in Grayslake, Illinois for some ideas on some design, only to have that firm be the one that designed Gateway Park Phase 1 in 1996?
Are you serious?
Small world.
[laughing]
And with that intro and doing some investigation into our files, learning that in 1996, 97, when what you see at Gateway Park was installed, was intended to be Phase 1.
I do recall talk of what we have is only the first phase of something, but that rounds the story out in a pretty funny way.
We may be now ready to look at Phase 2. And again, with, with that, a number of things that Christopher Burke, engineers and landscape architects had brought forward to this committee some time ago, one of the directions we received was to find an alternative or just find somebody with some different ideas, which we have done with Dan Delzeal at 3D Design. Some of them are probably more palatable than others, but we felt it at least to start to bring forward what, what Mr. Delzeal has submitted to get any comments from council that we can then feed back either to him or to the folks at Christopher Burke or others, depending on how we wish to proceed. And with that, I'll turn it over to Don to just kind of touch on the highlights of each of these designs.
And just to go back one phase before this, in 1973 was the first of what's out at Gateway Park was installed, which is the concrete benches. And so that was in 1973, and the benches, I don't, other than for skateboarders, really haven't been used, and they do have a 70s look to them. So, and that was the reason that Gateway, that the individual letters were taken out in the 90s was because it had that 70s look. So, here we are 20 years later, talking about it again. What I've handed out to you this evening is revisions to what Dan Delzeal had done to get the parking off the street. All the parking that is, the concept parking is all proposed on the site. And we, as staff, and, you know, when the discussion came up about memorial benches and the like, and additional plannings and stuff, we looked at other elements of our streetscaping that was done, which Gateway tied into in the 90s when we did Kirch Off-Road. So we looked at some of the elements that we have at other parts of Kirch Off-Road, including drinking fountains, trash receptacles, walkway lighting, et cetera, et cetera, and trying to find out exactly what council would like to see incorporated in that site as we go forward. Our, you know, thought is, is as we look back at the original vision for Gateway Park in the 90s when it was done, is those two masonry walls, there's an opening between them. And our thought when we met out there with both Christopher Burke and talking with Dan Delzeal, is that to make the walkway go between those two cement pillars or those two brick walls, so that it essentially is a gateway. The bushes and a lot of the plannings that are there would be reused on the site and, you know, areas could be made out there to where memorial benches could be installed. We also, you know, our thought was, you know, because of it being a walking area, let's add a drinking fountain and maybe some additional lighting out there, you know, the flagpole should be lit. It is, other than the light from the walls. And even those which are, you know, the big black cylinders, which were actually two sewer pipes or a sewer pipe that was cut in half to hide the electrical pipes because the original stuff had been damaged beyond repair. So, again, we talked with the sign manufacturer about putting, you know, not electronic message centers, but as far as illuminated signs up there instead of what we have. We have that shown on the boards up there also. If we chose to add an electronic message center to the one side of it, we'd be looking at about $28,000. It is doable. So all these things have been considered and what we've been looking at. The flagpole that's out there is 40 years old, we believe should be replaced, brought forward, made bigger, you know, just because it is a focal area of the city. So, with that, we ask for... So with that, we ask for input as far as what elements you would like to see us include in it, so that as we talk with these design firms, we can tell them specifically what council is looking for.
Thank you. Then, far friendlier voice, I'd like to start by saying, I personally think simpler's better. I think the fancier ones look pretty neat, and I certainly appreciate the creativity. But for my mind, on this particular part, I think simpler's better. So kind of in general, I was looking at number two, but I'm not married to anything particularly in that proposal, except for the circle, I believe should be about as big as it can get, and yes, retracting the flag pole back a little farther in and making it a bit more substantial as a flag, I think are good elements.
We thought about bringing it up further.
Yeah, okay.
Towards, so that you'd have stamp-colored concrete around it with the flag in front of the wall.
Oh, oh, oh.
Instead of back in the evergreens.
Okay, okay, I'm mixing two designs.
Yeah, no, there's just, there's a bunch of different elements, and I believe the Burke design is also included in there, which showed the flag pole.
Okay, correct, correct. I stand corrected. But finish off, I would also say, it's a neat idea, and it's nice. I'm not really interested in doing a water thing. I just don't think this really calls for it. And I just want to step up for somebody who did the designing. I'm not actually in favor of it, but it's not as silly as it sounds. If anybody was taking a look at this stuff and saw fitness equipment cluster and went, "What the heck are you talking about?", believe it or not, in Luxembourg City, when we were there, we were strolling through this park, and they had that. And it's really pretty neat. People kept jumping on and jumping off, which, you know, was cool, but you could tell it was like a novelty. People wanted to go, "Oh, I wonder what this feels like," and I'm not really sure it's worth the investment for a novelty. But it's not as silly as it sounds. It actually was surprisingly cool. I just don't think we need to go that direction.
Our recommendation is not to have recreational equipment, just because it takes us to a whole different insurance.
I agree. I agree. I think that falls under the category of simpler is better. So those are my thoughts. Other thoughts to be expressed, Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a couple of questions I have. I noticed on a number of these you have in the middle, a holiday tree.
Well, it used to be. That large evergreen tree, which used to be our tree lighting and no longer is. Again, Dan Del Ziel pulled these, if you look in the packet, the original proposal from the '90s is in there with his plan, and at that time, we were still using the holiday, that is the holiday tree.
No, I know that, but I mean, is the proposal to put another one in there and use it?
No, the tree, we are not proposing to remove. The tree is actually a beautiful pine tree, but would not be used as a holiday tree. There's no, has not been any discussion about moving the tree lighting.
It just symbolizes.
Okay, then that's fine. I just didn't know if that's, I'm just trying to envision my mind how we'd ever do the tree lighting down there, not have an absolute.
Yeah, that's part of the problem that we have.
I figure both the cheese would have double heart attacks on the spot.
It's one of the reasons why it got moved.
Parking spaces would accommodate. No, I don't think so.
And Alderman Cannon, that's one reason why it was moved to Kirchhoff Road, because of the parking issues and some of the other issues, but we're very conscious of that tree, and we do get people ask us all the time, "Could you light it up again?" And as you heard from Mr. Wenzel, there's some power issues. And when we were doing the walking, it was pretty funny watching some of our boxes, and I didn't trip over it, but someone else did.
And I guess a couple of thoughts. I think it's interesting that you offered some parking there. I think 10 is way too many spaces. I mean, I must never go by this park at the right time, because I never see anybody in there hardly. I can't remember the last time I saw an actual body in there. So I don't, my own, just my own opinion is, I don't understand why we put 10 spaces in. I don't think we would have 10, you know, 20-some people in there at one time, I don't think.
This is the landscape designer's suggestion.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just asking for feedback.
From a staff standpoint, I think if the council desired parking, we'd probably look at four or five spots.
So I mean, one of the things I'd asked for before, and I'm assuming it's not doable, is, let's see, if you look at the top sheet that we have, okay, the circle on the bottom on the left, that's before the parking spaces, there's an actual tree there right now.
Yes.
Would it be possible to curb-cut that and make space, parallel parking, like three or four spaces right there? Parallel, not all the way in. So just curb-cut, and whatever, what does a space take? 20 feet? I'm not even sure. But you'll make it from there until wherever the end of parks, just so cars could pull in, in park and get out. And I don't know if it's possible. I'm not saying it is, I just was wondering.
I do remember that being mentioned, yes.
It's definitely possible. I would probably want to get the opinion of our city engineer from a traffic standpoint with a 35 mile an hour speed limit on Kirchhoff Road and the proximity of where those spaces would be to vehicles coming out of Wilkie Road intersection. It may be a little bit hazardous, but it's certainly something we could look at.
That's why I said, I don't even know if it's even legal, so I mean, I understand the issue.
We can certainly look at it.
But if you put the parking lot in there, that would even get, I would think you'd almost have to have only a right-hand turn out of there, because.
Well, that's what it would be. It would be restricted. You wouldn't go that close. And then actually, when the architects were looking at it, it's how to make a safe, secure area, and that's what they were looking at. You don't want people backing into Kirchhoff. You don't want, this way it gives them a turnaround and a little bit, and you are correct. The architect was maximizing on parking. We don't believe that it needs to be maximized.
Okay. And last question I have, and this may be out of line, if it is, Mr. Mayor, you can tell me to be quiet, but is it possible that after we're done doing this, that we could donate this to the Park District and let them worry about it in the future? I mean, we're not supposed to be in the park business, I don't think. And maybe I'm offline saying that, I don't know. I just.
It's not a suggestion that's out of line.
Okay, I mean, I just would suggest, during the park business, they might even have a better feel for some of these things that are all, I mean, this exercise stuff sounds interesting to me. I understand the issues behind it, but it's, and then guess the last, the last thought I would have is, when I was involved in this a couple of years ago, and I expressed this, is, you know, that space on the other side of the street is just barren and sitting there. I guess I'd like to see something done there. I hate to make a statement like that and not offer any viable suggestions, but it just seems like it's just space, and it's, that's much more easily accessible than this.
We also consider the parking over there, because we do have pedestrian walkway in order, want to try to direct people in between the wall into the gateway.
Okay, fair enough.
Even, again, this is concept, and we, that is an option, of putting parking across the street and kind of forcing people to walk in there.
Okay, so I guess my last thing is, I would just say, you know, I'm interested in that you're doing something. I think it's great. I guess I'm a little bit worried about budget, and I really would like to have it turned over to the Park District when we're done. Just my thoughts. Sorry, Barry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, and those discussions we've actually had about across the street too, because even when the, they were out here, there's another party that we would have to bring in on that other green space. And I'll be very vague about that, but we haven't told them what we're doing on our side, but to get them back, we do need to bring them in if we're talking about that.
Further thoughts around the table, Mr. Majikis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Who's warden it is?
That's right. Thank you very much. I agree with you on the fact I like the simpler designs better, for the amount of space that is and everything. But my question, and refresh my memory, because even though it's my ward, I can't exactly picture, where that, where the projected parking spots are in that house right there, is there currently a fence, or is it just bushes?
A chain link fence with some.
Which is there.
Nothing, nothing.
Which is theirs?
As far as a hedge, it's theirs.
Okay, so would, it's hard to kind of tell from this. Do you think, being that if we added parking there, would we want to be doing any type of fencing, or more shrubs, or something, or is it would be a limited amount of space then between the concrete?
I think the safest thing would be to have some discussions with the neighbor before we got too far along with their parking faces west, faces east, whether a stockade fence or some other type of screening enhancements would be done there. To me, all be part of the process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple thoughts or comments. The parallel parking on Kirchhoff, I would not be in favor of that. I mean, I think that that's, people coming off of Wilkie going north onto Kirchhoff gets a little bit of a racetrack at that point in time. But I think that having the parking for, you know, 10 or 5, whatever cars, I think that makes sense, because, you know, where I live, I would never go here otherwise. I mean, you know, this is great for people walking and probably live within 4 to 6 blocks, but anybody that lives anywhere aside from here is never going to go there. And if we're going to spend all this money to make it nice, we should make it so that people can go utilize it versus having to walk 3 miles to get there, you know. I guess the only other question I would have is, would it make sense to, you know, as compared to paying a designer or somebody, you know, bring, you know, Harper or Rolling Meadows High School in and say, "This is what we'd like to do. These are some of our initial thoughts." Have the students draw up ideas, and then, you know, as compared to paying somebody 4,000 or 5 or 10 or whatever it's going to cost, let those guys do it as a project, you know. Maybe that'd be just an idea, you know, that I'd entertain.
Thank you. That suggestion is very well taken. The only thing I might add, and it's not going to surprise anybody, because I beat this drum all the time, the third category of people, people who might walk there and people who might drive there, are the significant population that I see. People swing around there on their bikes all the time. And so, for example, one of the things that I've been talking about as we do this, if, you know, you redo a water fountain there and you dress it up and so forth and so on, I think there will be people who will stop more than they do and swing on through. And so, you know, I hope, in my mind, that's just kind of assumed, but maybe it's better to say it out loud, I hope we're specifically considering the bicycles that go around there as well. Because when I'm not in school, I'm running through there probably three out of every seven mornings, and, you know, there's always dog walkers, runners, and bikers. They're not in any great crowds, I assure you, they're not, but they're not uncommon. So I figure I'll voice that out loud, that let's not forget the bicycles. Mr. Banjer?
Thank you. I'm of the opinion that simpler is better. The largest circle within the, within the existing bike path would be preferable, giving the biggest green space the furthest off the pavement. So if people are bringing their kitties, they're kind of confined to that, not straying too far to the street. And also, I would, I would actually not only say that I agree that bikers would find their way to this, but I would favor the least amount of parking spaces, but have a bike rack that would hold, you know, a half dozen or a dozen bikes, just to encourage people parking and locking them up there and playing around in the park. And the only thing missing here is I don't see any beehive areas.
Why didn't I know that?
There's a bike rack right there. Oh, okay, yes.
Okay, but is there a beehive, Mr. Cannon? Is there a beehive?
That would have to be an addition.
That's really another thing I would suggest.
That's not in the budget.
I believe the flower area is designated a bee habitat. Is that close enough?
Yes.
Further comments or questions on this item? Mr. Pranow?
Three quick points. Don, you mentioned that, are there some issues that you'd like to clean up with electrical there?
Yes.
So that would be part of it, okay. And then, secondly, one thing, and Alderman Majikis has brought it up, and I've had residents bring it up, is the fact is that we used to light that park up a lot more. So if we're doing this and we're also having, I don't know, two committees looking at entranceways and city markers, maybe looking at that all in one, and also, how can we get some more power there so that we can light it up? So it's a dark area, but for those of us that are around 30 years ago, it used to be quite, you know, coming into Meadows, it really was something, and so I just, I'm not sure how to propose it, but just could everyone sort of keep that in mind, and when you're looking forward to cleaning up the electrical, I don't know what it takes to put in some more electrical, so that in the future, if you do want to do something, it's already there and it doesn't cost us a lot.
I would firmly agree. I would say, next year, I'm coming up on being a 20-year resident, and I discovered that gets you nowhere in this town, because you lose, I've been here poker very quickly with that. And I recall when I was first introduced to Rolling Meadows, starting to come driving out here, driving past that at holiday time with the light up, I seem to recall a great big blue soldier, don't I? That was one of the.
One of the holiday decorations.
Yeah, exactly. It was one of the things that I remember standing out, and, you know, if it's not going to cost an arm and a leg, and we don't have to have a gigantic solar panel, I fully concur in Mr. Pranow's comments. I would like to see that too. Anybody else on the final item on tonight's agenda, at least as far as open session goes?
Can we just clarify then?
Certainly.
Okay, the elements that we're looking for, the, I just want to clarify, the elements that we're looking for as we get a design put together, is we want a drinking fountain, additional sight lighting, right? The bike rack. The flower plannings, I know Mr. Banjer had mentioned maybe a year ago that possibly he had a group that may be interested in, you know, doing some plannings over there. Certainly, we'd like to get more color into the park with flowers. And so, as we look at the design, you know, creating planning beds that perhaps your group would be interested in planning, or the garden club even. So, and then as far as memorial benches, are we still on? Okay.
And then the only other thing is, just clarification and two quick additional, the turnaround, you're still comfortable with what we talked about in the design? And then the other part, and you'll see, some of them have it, some of them don't, but from that corner, having a walkway all the way through or not, that's the other question.
Through the, through the wall, as depicted in the picture, both in your packet.
Oh, oh, oh. I certainly would like to see that be a goal.
Yes.
I think that would make the whole flagpole plaza make more sense.
And I think that I heard, not a consensus, but more people leaning towards the 6 spaces, not the 10.
It seemed like more people were leaning to a smaller number, and I'm seeing shaking heads to confirm that.
And then just last, just lastly, as we develop this, we can certainly look at the space across the street as part of it, but maybe bring some of the elements of that across the street as warranted, but we'll do that once we've satisfied the direction for Gateway Park.
I believe that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Mr. Jett?
Is any thought on the schools or that, at this point in time, are we just going to ignore that idea?
In terms of?
For the design, for doing the design as compared to hiring somebody.
Well, yes, I'm sorry. Then, yes, that should be part of the clarification, just at least to reach out to those organizations and say, "Is this something that you'd be interested in helping us out with?" Yes, let's make sure that gets clarified and added in.
We can check on the feasibility and the timeframe, if something were available, but just depending on what the school years and, you know.
Absolutely.
We'll inquire and see what is offered or not offered.
It's worth the asking, I believe. Then is there anything else? Mr. Pranow?
When you're talking about the lighting, that's including upgrading the electrical for the future, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, if you were looking for clarification, just want to make sure.
Well, our intent is, is looking at the site as there's like four crab apple trees that are out there that are overgrown and in terrible shape, and get rid of them and replant what's in front of the sign, reutilize it on the site, and then that would be incorporated into holiday lighting.
All right, then is there anything further on this item? And having concluded all the items that are in for open session, there are two items under closed session. They both involve union negotiations, which does fall under subsection C something, C 21?
Where's Jenny?
It's the.
It's really.
Anybody paying enough attention to help me or no? I'll call it up, just the computer went to sleep, because it had been a while since I clicked anything on it. That's what I'm looking for, subsection C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It does require a formal motion and a roll call vote. Therefore, Mr. Pranow has made the motion, and it has been seconded to go into closed session to discuss union negotiations for both police and fire. session to discuss union negotiations for both police and fire. The question is, shall the council now enter closed session for those two purposes? Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pranow?
Yes.
Ms. Majikis?
Yes.
Mr. Judd?
Yes.
Mr. Baner?
Yes.
Mr. Diastis?
Okay.
That is unanimous of those who are here this evening, therefore, the council will now enter closed session. Members of the audience and of the press are advised that we do not expect to take any action upon returning to open session.